Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Before I share my thoughts, I just want to recognize a couple of my colleagues, Senator Teletight Tagui and Senator Tonyada. We also have with the panel Director of Customs Ike Paredo. We have Major Manny Chong from GPD. We have Sean Nelson from Department of Youth Affairs and Dr. Richard Fee and also Stephen Amigun. And Chief Joey Madabushen from the Fire Department. This virtual hearing is not called order. Today's date is May 10th, 2021. And the time now is, I guess, 10:30. The Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Response, Military Veterans Affairs, Mayor's Council of Guam, Public Transit, is conducting a public hearing today on Bill 3436-COR. And for the record, ladies and gentlemen, and your formans with Section 8107 of Chapter 8 Title V, GCA, the first public hearing notice was sent out on Monday, May 3rd, 2021, to adhere to the five working days we can, and the second public hearing adhering to the 48 hours notice, was sent out on Friday, May 7th, 2021. And in addition to these notices, we send it out to the, we send it out to the media and post it on the Guam Legislature's website. Ladies and gentlemen, Bill 3436-COR authored by Jim C. Moylan is an act to add, Section 51102.30 to Chapter 51 of Title 17 Guam Code Annotating, relative to authorizing the Post Commission to establish a standardized and uniformed law enforcement officer's general force leadership structure tier, and pay scale plan for the peace officers, and to be known as the Post Attraction, Retention, and Incentive Act of 1921. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to refer this now to Senator Moylan, the author of the bill, Bill 3436-COR. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for those folks here today to testify on behalf. Just a brief introduction of the bill is, as we know, there are many obstacles with the recruitment and the hiring and the retention of our law enforcement officers, also known as LEOs. And these are our peace officers of the government of Guam, coming from different agencies like Department of Corrections, Guam Police Department, Department of Youth Affairs, Agriculture, Fire Inspectors, Parks and Rec Officers, Airport Police, Office of the Attorney General, Judiciary Guam, and Port Police as well. So the LEOs are our law enforcement officers providing daily protection to our residents. And today's public hearing for Bill 3436 addresses a much needed improvement for the retention of our LEOs. Improvements with the help of the expertise of the Peace Officer Standard and Training Commission, better known as POST. Now, they are the key to implementing this measure. But this measure is also being called the Post Attraction, Retention, and Incentive Act, otherwise known as the PARI Act of 2021. Now, our findings show that within the LEOs, there are inconsistent and inequitable disparities in salaries, and similar levels of basic supervisory and management responsibilities, starting from recruitment, the basic level, and the disparity continues as the LEOs progress in their careers. There is a noticeable difference in agencies from their tier levels to their pay scales, such as what we see with the Guam's Customs Authority and the Guam Police Department, just for an example. Now, past practices of the government of Guam has paid for costly pay scale studies, which have not corrected the inconsistent or inequitable disparity for the LEOs. However, the Post Commission, who comprises of various LEO entities, can improve our retention, while avoiding a costly studies through the PARI Act of 2021, by developing two things. First, the standard and uniformed law enforcement officer general force leadership structure tier. And the second is a general pay plan. Now, the PARI Act of 2021 authorizes the Post Commission to establish these two things, the structured tier and the pay plan. And the commission, its members shall also include the advisory member of the Guam Federation of Teachers, Teachers and the Civil Service Commission, and the completion of the pay scale plan. So this plan, when completed, shall be presented to the legislature for review and consideration. I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity for the public hearing. I look forward to the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, sir.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Next in line, we want to call on Richard Lee, Dr. Richard Fee. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, I need to share your screen. Okay, I clicked. Oh, here we go. This is going to work. Very good. Okay, good. My name is Dr. Richard Fee, and I'd love to take this opportunity to speak in favor of Bill 3436. Although I'm not a law enforcement officer, I do have a strong background in law enforcement education. I was professor of education for many years before joining the judiciary of Guam as their judicial educator for Guam with responsibility for training all marshals and probation officers to the Post Commission standards. I'm also a certified court manager. About a year and a half ago, I was asked by the governor's office to assist POST, the Post Commission, which is the agency responsible for creating standards of training and certification for all 1,220 law enforcement officers across 13 post agencies. The position allowed me to evaluate all aspects of law enforcement on Guam. This also allowed me to take a broader look at law enforcement profession than you normally would from a single agency's perspective. I looked at all aspects of law enforcement from recruitment to retirement. I've surveyed and interviewed literally hundreds of officers, chiefs, and academy recruits. And I feel I have a good understanding of the issues being discussed today. And the Post Commission is in the process of making modifications to its system in recruiting, training, and certifying law enforcement. What I want to focus on today is the very critical issue of salaries and how it's impacted law enforcement and community safety. And I also want to make it very, very clear, I'm not speaking officially on behalf of the Post Commission. I understand that the goal of this bill is to create a unified salary scale under all 1,200 law enforcement across the agencies. And this act would explore a common salary scale that would overcome the current salary discrepancies amongst the agents. And as I understand it, it simply authorizes the Post Commission to conduct study and make recommendations which would still have to be approved by the legislature and the governor. The Post Commission has been given legal authority for, really, for all aspects of law enforcement, and including hiring, ethical behavior, training, and retention. And it's really, it's a logical, it's logical to request the Post Commission to conduct this this study. If you look at the demographics from what we've been able to gather, we, as we said before, we have 13 agencies within the Post Commission, including the Fire Department, for about 1,220 officers that were responsible for certifying and and overseeing in some way. And all of these officers are under tremendous public scrutiny. Guam is no different than any other jurisdiction in that there's a high attrition to retirement rate. It's very, very difficult to keep officers, even, as I can say, based on salary and public image. It takes a very unique young or old person to stand up to the negative press for very low wages. If you look at our attrition, again, we have about 1,220. Our attrition rate across the board is about 8% to 10% each year, which is extremely high. That means our academies have to generate 97 to 122 new recruits each year just to break even. Now, all of these agencies, 1,220, if you ask them individually, they'll tell you they're probably down 10% or 20% already, plus the attrition rate. If you look at GPD's attrition rate, and I looked at each of the agencies, but GPD is a good one. It makes up about 34% of all law enforcement. You have about 276. I'd spoke with HR and they said, well, we anticipate eight officers. But if you looked at the newspaper recently, they're actually expecting maybe 44 that we're going to lose. So that means the present GPD Academy of 22, you're still down 22 officers.
Tuesday next week or something.
Check your speaker someone. Okay, thank you. That's someone. And what's really sad is that we may have one or two academies a year. But in the last two years alone in GPD, they've lost 12 young officers. And the main reason comes down to salaries. If you look at UOG and GCC, UOG had 206 graduates in the last five years. And GPD had, I mean, GCC, the Associate Degree in Criminal Justice, they had 105. Yet these folks are not going into law enforcement, and the main reason is low salaries. How does this work across the board? Well, if you look at the recruitment process and salaries, we take a new recruit who goes through rigorous training, background checks, polygraphs, pass, they have to pass an English and math entrance exam for DOA and for GCC. They then complete a very intensive six-month criminal justice academy, which includes 31 to 49 college graduates, and they receive what's known as a criminal justice certificate. Then, where do they go? Well, if they take Agency Number One, they get $1187 an hour. Agency Two pays a little more. Agency Three is at $15. And if you remember, that's what most people are pushing across the country as the minimum wage just to sustain life. We have one, an agency of 16, and is the goal. But remember, the 15, there's only one agency that pays 15. There's only one agency that pays 16. And both of these agencies actually don't want young recruits. They want someone with a couple of years' experience. And then you take the 18-year, and that's only one also. So the vast majority of our recruits are making $1187. How does that compare nationally? This chart's available, and I'll send it over to Senator Tulahe's office. This presentation I've shared with the governor's office and the governor and the, and her cabinet. And I'll be also presenting a lot of this to the Post Commission. But if you just look at the Police Department, $1187, Agriculture, Fire Department, Youth and Community Affairs, I mean, DYA, and so forth, and it gets a little bit higher. At the top is the port, which is paying $18.19 an hour for a fresh recruit. They're also paying security guards at $14.15, which is good character and a pulse compared to the trainee who's just gone through a six-month academy. How does that compare nationally? I looked at beginning salaries of officers in places that where a lot of our local folks eventually wind up. Guam, we pay the $1187 in the academy, $1187 when you get out. San Antonio, you start at 22 in the academy and you finish, and you start your career at 26. Vegas, 23, 25. Seattle, 32 and 40. Fremont is $47 in the academy and 52 when you start in the actual job. Many of our locals go to the federal government, which starts at about $18.50 an hour plus geographical bonuses. And what we've been finding, and I know a lot of our agencies get very distressed, is they go through the academy, they put in a little bit of training time with their agency, and they're off to the federal government right on island for a much, much higher salary. How do you recruit and keep people to take a bullet for $8.80 an hour? What we've found is that the deterrent is not the bullet. A lot of our young folks feel impervious to bullets. It's the money. It comes down to they just cannot afford to enter this profession unless they get lucky and get into the port or one of the little bit paying agency. What we did, or what I did, was we conducted a survey. We asked agencies if they would support a post-unified salary scale. And the answers we got, well, we got mixed responses. 48% said yes with a capital letter and we're ready to go. We got a few no with capital letters, but most of them were mild no's because they First of all, they were terrified that the government, not terrified, they were concerned that the government would reduce the salaries of the higher-paying agencies. They were also very concerned, well, how do you handle education and rank placement between agencies? One of the things that officers are always concerned about is what happens if I go from GPD to the airport or the airport to agriculture? Will I lose in the transition? And the last is, they were very concerned that the Post Commission would need staff to handle it. Atalou, the governor has assured us that they will never reduce salaries, so there's always a hope that salaries will rise. And we've also been promised that the POST will get the needed support to do it. So, I, do I support the act? Yes, I support the act for the following reasons. POST is the government agency that supervises all aspects of law enforcement. This is just one more logical responsibility. The PARZ Act creates the same equity for law enforcement officers as nurses and teachers in government services. If I were to become a teacher for JDOE, there's one salary scale, no matter where I'm assigned in the 41 schools or the rank that I, that I have, I'm going to get that same salary. If I'm a nurse and government service, it doesn't matter if I work for GMH or in public health or wherever, I'm going to be on the same salary scale. And so this bill is logical in that way. Next, it's a fairness issue. All of our recruits have the same training and certification. Agency placement should not account for a $7 difference. We should be trying to raise our salaries to that $18 an hour for all of these folks who are risking their lives. It will reduce or eliminate competition between the agencies based on salaries alone. And this will allow officers to transfer between agencies without a pay loss. And individual agencies will not have to fight for their own salaries. And, and this last one is for the senators, because I'm very concerned about their time. The legislature will not have to negotiate with 13 different agencies over a unified salary scale. I suppose the bottom line is this, there is a critical need to review and increase salaries. Individual agencies will always fight for their own members, which is fair enough. The Post Commission serves all agencies, and so it seems logical to place this task with the Post Commission to conduct the study. I'd like to thank Senator Moylan for introducing the bill. The time is right for this action. And I'd certainly like to thank Senator Tulahe for conducting the hearings. Again, I support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fee. We have several people that are online with us, and I'm going to go down the line. So the next speaker will be Sean Nelson. Sean, go ahead, sir.
As a correction officer for Department of Chief Affairs, I do support this bill, and I believe that it should be fair across the board. Pardon?
Is that it?
That's correct, Senator. That is it.
Okay, so you're supporting the bill. And next in line will be Joey Maribusen, I guess, from the Fire Department.
Joey, go ahead, sir. Yes, the Guam Fire Department, we support this bill. And I would like to add some comments, if I can share my screen. I'm trying to share my screen, but it's saying I cannot. Because Dr. Fee's still holding the screen?
No, go ahead and
Okay. Anyways, with the Guam Fire Department, we have in place fire officer professional qualifications based on national standards. And one of the things I wanted to request with the POST at probably our next meeting is to consider either recognizing or some reciprocity for our certification programs that are nationally recognized and, and fully accredited, by the way. So we do have Fire Officer One, which is a supervisory level. The Fire Officer Two, which is supervisory slash managerial. Fire Officer Three, which is getting towards the administrative level, and Fire Officer Four, which is the administrative level. In addition to that, we also have competencies for incident commanders, which I think would be very relevant for all police officers as well. Because of the nature of what's going on today in the world, in many cases, a police officer can take charge of a criminal incident command scene. And these competencies are totally relevant, and I did have classmates when we had training where they actually took these courses. So it'll be great to consider implementing these and incorporating them into the qualifications. NFPA 1031, we have it broken down into Fire Inspector One, Fire Inspector Two, and Fire Inspector Three. And those are our category two peace officers. And in NFPA 1033, which is our category one peace officers, are certifications that are also with the National Fire Protection Association. Also, NFPA 1037, which, which covers the fire marshal professional qualifications. Now, we also have the Center for Public Safety and Excellence. I did discuss these with Dr. Fee in one of our meetings, and he's pretty receptive to a lot of it. But, you know, I want to open it up to the rest of our Post Commission and to any of our elected leaders, if they want to take a look at this for further discussion. But yes, Guam Fire Department is totally for it, but we just want to make sure that our category two peace officers and our category one peace officers are carefully considered. And how are we going to incorporate not just the Guam Fire Department, but the other agencies that are primarily category two? Is there going to be a lower salary consideration? Or is it going to be based on certification? These are things that probably need to be considered. If we're going to, if the law's going to make it where it's broad, where interpretation can, can lie with the Post Commission, that'll probably be good, so we don't have to keep coming back to the legislature. But ultimately, that'll be based on the language of the law and the way we take it at the Post Commission. Thank you very much.
Okay, Chief, thank you very much. Before we move forward, I want to recognize some of my colleague that that just arrived. I want to recognize Senator John Brown, Senator Cruz Janius, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Kellena Nelson. And as soon as every, this, the guest speaks, then I'm going to allow the, the senators to ask their questions. Next in line to speak is Chief Ike Paredo. Ike, go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Tulahe and also Senator Moylan, members of this hearing committee. My name is Ike Paredo, and I'm the Director of Customs and Quarantine Agency. Before I begin, I would like to thank each of you for the opportunity to testify in support of Bill 34-36. The Customs and Quarantine Agency has struggled to meet hiring goals in recent years, and frontline staffing is below target staffing levels. Our workforce is our best asset, and maintaining a resilient workforce is critical to accomplishing our agency's mission, which relies on dedicated personnel who go above and beyond to keep our island safe from all harm. Bill 34-36 seeks to authorize the Post Commission to establish a standardized and uniformed law enforcement officer general force leadership structure tier and pay scale plan for peace officers. This bill is key to the career considerations of law enforcement professionals. A new employee who embarks on law enforcement career at 18 could potentially serve in one agency for 44 years, given the penalties, the newly defined benefit of 1.75 retirement plan imposed due to age and service fulfillments. The new retirement plans allows the employee to retire at age 55 after 30 years of service. However, this comes with penalties for every year prior to the age of 62. This is intended to retain government employees for longer periods of government services. Currently, the Customs and Quarantine Agency has six levels of outward progression in our current structure. Six levels could very well wear down even the most optimistic employee. For this reason, CQA supports this bill and remains confident the work performed by POST would establish the appropriate levels of law enforcement career progressions and structure that will keep an employee enthused and retained in this law enforcement jobs. Open discussion among CQA managers Open discussion amongst C Q A managers involves ideas of structure similar to the military nine levels of enlisted force structure. This discussion of nine levels of law enforcement career progression bodes well for our current future of customs officers. In closing, I would like to thank again, thank the committee for the opportunity to testify before you here today and kindly urge the members of the legislature to support Bill 34-36 in our quest towards protecting our island, our people, and resources. Thank you. If you have any questions regarding my testimony, I will be pleased to answer them accordingly.
Thank you very much, Director Paredo. And next in line to speak is Major from the Guam Police Department Manny Chong. Major Manny Chong, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Senator. Good morning, everybody. Sir, submitting my written testimony. But I'd just like to touch on some few things that I did write down. Again, like what Dr. Fee mentioned, the biggest reason why the Guam Police Department loses personnel is because of pay. The base salary for a police officer training coming into the Guam Police Department is $24,689. That's only $11.87 an hour. A laborer coming into the government of Guam makes $23,171. So a police officer only makes $1,518 more than a laborer. Yet, the police officer has to go to an eight-month academy, carries a firearm, has to enforce laws, protect life and property, provide police service, investigate crimes, arrest criminal perpetrators, cover stolen property, prepare reports for judicial proceedings, prevent traffic violators, provide testimony judicial proceedings, has to make split-second decisions that may affect life and death, is held to higher standards while off-duty as well as on-duty, maintain a professional appearance and personality when dealing with the public, et cetera. Okay, so, you know, that is the biggest reason why the Guam Police Department is losing personnel. If you look at one of the agencies that have been taking our personnel, the naval-based police, their starting salary is $34,916, and it ranges up to $70,862. So that's about, starting pay for naval-based police officer is $16.78. Okay, because there's some border protection, okay? They make entry level 35 grand, so that's a little bit more than a naval-based police officer. Then we just lost an officer last week to Aurora Police Department. He's been in the department for about four years. This guy's gonna be making 80 grand, okay? So you can't blame these people for leaving the department, okay? So, you know, in this bill, it says that, you know, we need to come up with some type of base or, yeah, pay grade for law enforcement. The way I see it is rather than reinvent the wheel, why don't we just move them up on the current pay scale to maybe a salary that's a little bit more than the highest-paid entry-level agency, which is $19.30. If there's an agency making $18, we need to come close to that, okay? So that would be ML 04-01, $19.30, okay? Adjust everybody that have been in accordingly to this pay race. And then you're gonna have recruitment. You're gonna have retention, and you're gonna have incentives for people to delay retirement. You're gonna have people with incentive to come back to the Guam Police Department or come back to Guam and be a law enforcement officer, okay? Because Guam is everybody's home, okay? They, you know, they have family, they, you know, the ownership is here, okay? They're leaving the island or they're leaving the local law enforcement for money, okay? So let's give them the money and let them stay in the agencies that they are working on, working at, okay? So, you know, this testimony is, I'm not speaking on behalf of the Guam Police Department. I'm speaking on behalf as a concerned police officer who has some insight as to why officers are leaving and who has an idea as to how we can retain them. And with that, sir, I'm open up for any questions somebody, anybody might have.
So Major, you're supporting the bill?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next in line, we go forward, Stephen Amaguen. Sir, go ahead. Stephen, go ahead, sir. Stephen, are you going to speak or you want me to go to the next person?
I'm gonna speak, sir. I know, Liam, but before I start, my name is Stephen Amaguen from the Guam Police Department. My testimony is my own personal opinion and does not represent the Guam Police Department's position regarding the proposed legislation under 36 Guam Legislature Bill 34-36. When it passes, I guess it becomes the Paria of 2021. I'm not gonna say I'm opposed or I'm in favor of this bill, but this bill authorized the Post Commission, which has been lacked support, lack of support staff to conduct a research and only authorized collectively to gather its Post Commission members to conduct a research with the assistance of the Guam Federation of Teachers and the Civil Service Commission and in the absence of our Department of Administration. I would like to bring back the government's effort when the government was authorized to conduct a pay study, which is now known as the Government Competitive Act of 2014 in accordance with Public Law 32068, Chapter 10, I believe, Section 2, which appropriated $7.7 million for the pay increases that was conducted. This study was initiated in 2006 by the Governor Felix Camacho's administration and finalized in 2010 during Governor Eddie Cavos' administration. If I'm not mistaken, the government hired a company, subject matter expert, cost about $30 million to finalize the study. Part of the study was the law enforcement pay. And I am quite positive that intensive review of duties responsibilities, job descriptions of all peace officers as defined in Guam Code annotated Title VIII, Chapter 5, was conducted. A government spent millions of dollars to hire a company within their area of expertise to conduct the study for over a period of three to four years. And this proposed bill authorized an entity that is outside the realm of their expertise to conduct a study that was already conducted and implemented by our government and cost a lot of money. I strongly believe that the previous study was conducted properly for what the government has paid for. Our government will not be able to afford additional studies and maybe redundancy, and will cost millions of dollars, which our government cannot afford right now. In regards to giving a Post Commission the authorization to establish a standardized and uniformed law enforcement general leadership structures, bring back the tedious process of implementing a unified physical fitness examinations, which ended up with its agencies implementing their own physical fitness examination after realizing that each agency has different duties and responsibilities, job descriptions, and that is probably how the Guam Competitive Wage Act of 2014 was finalized. It is also codified in our local laws of which agencies of their areas of responsibilities and jurisdictions. The Guam Police Department, the only police department of Guam, has the jurisdiction as described under Title 10, Guam Code annotated, Chapter 77. We have the power under the title of powers and duties responsible of the department. The department is charged with the enforcement of all criminal laws. Each police officer is authorized to protect life and property, enforce the law, prevent crime, preserve the peace, arrest violators pursuant to Title VIII, Guam Code annotated, serve the public, conduct search procedures of property pursuant to Title VIII, Guam Code annotated, and perform duties of a peace officer. Highlighting C on the same law section of the title, the Guam Police Department shall have jurisdiction within the territory of Guam, overall lands, whether titled to the government or not, including submerged lands or waterways, whether navigable or not, or all airspace above such land and waterways with respect to which the territory has jurisdiction. The law describes the Guam Police Department as indeed the premier law enforcement agency of Guam. And I believe that was one of the promises of one of our elected leaders that they will make Guam Police Department a premier law enforcement agency of Guam. Making a unified pay scale is not gonna do it. We're gonna drive a lot of our police officers to an agency with lesser jurisdiction, with higher pay and less stress. And only the police department, further explained under Title VIII, it shows about Guam Police Department being the premier law enforcement. Guam Code annotated, Chapter 5, a subsection 5.56, peace officers to yield to Guam Police Department. A peace officer while conducting within his statutory law enforcement authority outside of his jurisdiction, highlighted outside of his jurisdiction, Guam Police Department has jurisdiction over Guam, shall yield and be subordinate to a peace officer of the Guam Police Department. So it's gonna be hard to really implement the same duties responsibilities as stated by the proposed bill, who subsequently responds having such jurisdictions as provided with Title 10, Guam Code annotated, which I just mentioned earlier. All other law enforcement agencies have limited jurisdictions, not as huge as Guam Police Department. It will be impossible to establish a standardized and uniformed law enforcement general leadership force structure if the size of the agency, operational budget, jurisdictions are not like the Guam Police Department. In addition to the hurdles that I mentioned, we have autonomous agencies, agencies from different branches of our government that has their own rules and regulations, which is totally not unified within the government, thus creating disparity disparities. That's gonna be the biggest hurdles that we're gonna have if this bill passes. It is to my own wisdom to suggest that before any empowerment of the Post Commission that probably an effort to form a legislation to establish post as an agency by itself as a start. I believe only the director is being funded and not the support staff. So I feel sorry for other law enforcement agencies that have been taking away from their time to work on something that could be done by an agency. This will give them the resources to conduct research or hire the subject matter experts, like how we hired the Hay Group, along with the collective participation of Department Administration and other administration sections of law enforcement agencies, because they do have a different personal rules and regs for the authority of Guam, Guam International Airport, et cetera, who are currently member of the Post Commission to improve our law enforcement community. As far as retention and recruitment, only the committed members of our community who are willing to serve our island in this community will join the Guam Police Department. We need people that are willing to work for the people of Guam, not just for pay, but for their desire to serve. We have, we have people left in the department currently in our department now, those are the dedicated public servants who are willing to risk their lives to serve and protect our island. All efforts have been made to help our law enforcement agencies like the 40%. As a matter of fact, I testified in that bill. Supposed to help out the pay disparity during the timeframe. And I believe that was supposed to be geared towards Guam Police Department. But due to the timeframe of the introduction of the bill, I believe it was election time, that everybody received 40%, so it kind of disregarded the mission or the purpose of the bill itself. So that was, you know, it's a blessing in disguise on our part, but it did not serve the purpose of trying to help out the Guam Police Department or to pretty much address the pay disparity amongst the law enforcement agencies. And also I thank the administration for the current recruitment effort that we're doing, that they're doing right now, which is helping on Guam Police Department. I know we're trying to come up with a mandate, another funding mandate that was created under former center, I believe, that allow 40, a requirement of 40 police officers every year since 2017 up to 2021. That bill was passed into law without identifying what kind of budget that the hiring process is gonna be. That's why we have not really, well, the chief of police right now, they're trying to, we're trying to catch up with the mandate, because 2021 is the year that the bill, the last part of the bill that was supposed to hire 40, but due to budget constraint, I think it's gonna be hard. I understand the rotation recruitment are driven by money. You know, money is, love of money is always, money is always the root of everything. But love or money is, you know, the root of. But we also have to make sure that we hire the right people with the right hearts and minds to serve our public, not just for the money. Lastly, instead of creating more disparity in pay, what kind of legislative bill be introduced to have an applicant for law enforcement officer be obligated to sign an agreement to stay in that agency for a period of time and pay back the amount to train them when he or she decides to leave the agency before the suggested timeframe? Thank you for giving the opportunity to voice out my concerns and opinion regarding this bill. And again, I just want to close out that this is my own opinion. It does not represent the Guam Police Department.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Next in line, we want to go to Sergeant Portapal. Sergeant, go ahead, sir.
Alfred Buenas, good senators. Thank you again for the opportunity on behalf to speak on behalf of Bill 34-36. Again, this is my own opinion, I'm not a reflection of the Guam Police Department. I personally am in support of this bill. I do, I want to give the big, thank you for the author for seeing the need for a bill that addresses the disparity pay with certain law enforcement agencies. Dr. Fee did provide an excellent layout as to what we are seeing with the boots on the ground and what the men and women who choose to work under the Guam Police Department see as a disparity. You know, prior to me joining in this virtual meeting, I met with some of the officers that had to be activated relative to an incident that happened, and they, you know, worked straight through with the case loads that they handle on, pretty much on a daily basis. But understanding the need for adjustment and making the appropriate, taking the appropriate action to address these issues in recruitment, retention, and of course, dealing with attrition and how do we preserve the life of an officer or a law enforcement officer is really one step closer to, this bill is one step closer in obtaining that. Dr. Fee brought up a great point with the post-unified salary scale. Fear of whether you pay adjustment and everything, it's really, you know, I was really taken back by that. You know, I think it should be based on the scale on the work that is performed by an individual person or a respective agency. For $11.47 comparable to $18.19, it's really, I mean, this is something that really does need to be taken into consideration and of course, really taken into an account. But again, I'm only speaking on me as a, for my personal, this is my personal opinion. I'm no way, you know, in understanding this, and I'm still trying to find the fact of the numbers that I saw that was presented by Dr. K, but I am in support of this bill and I do support the efforts with the Post Commission. And the post-unified salary scale should just be implemented with moving forward with this bill. Thank you.
Sergeant, thank you very much. Next in line, we want to bring it to the chief of police, Stephen Ignacio. Sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Senator Alfred, and good morning, Senator Pito Telay, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Senator Jim Moylan, the author of the bill, Senator Tonyara, Senator Chris Duenias, Senator Nelson, Senator Tidaway, Senator Brown, and all of my fellow law enforcement directors and to the officers of the Guam Police Department that testified in favor of or in support of or against, thank you for your input. Truly grateful that you came forward to provide your perspective on this bill as it has the ability to affect us. So just a couple of thoughts, and you know, I've been listening to all the testimony. And I serve two roles here. Not only am I the chief of police, but I am also the chair of the Post Commission. I have been the chair since 2019. And so I'd like to offer a perspective from both positions with respect to this. And so I'd like to offer a perspective from both positions with respect to this bill. So in its current form, as the Chief of Police and as the Chairman of the Post, I cannot support this bill as written. And here are some of my concerns, and I have actually brought this up in the past. One, when we talk about a pay scale, the law enforcement community already has a pay scale if you fall under the Department of Administration. We have the law enforcement pay plan. It is separate and apart from the general pay scale plan under the Department of Administration. And that's an important thing because the Guam Police Department and I believe most of the other law enforcement agencies fall under this general pay scale plan and in this law enforcement pay scale plan established by the Department of Administration when they implemented the forty percent across the board pay increase. And I'll circle back to the forty percent because I have some thoughts about that as well. Okay. The other thing is that thanks to Senator Nelson, the Post Commission has that ability now to adopt its own rules. So if we look at that then, it says if we adopt this bill becomes law thirty-four thirty-six, then we technically have that authority now to go ahead and adopt our own pay scale plan because we have that authority to promulgate our own rules under. Sorry, I accidentally muted myself. The other thing is I currently have a study by Dr. Rivera from the University of Guam and that study should be completed by the end of this semester. And really what it is is that, just like everybody else among my command staff and amongst my fellow police officers and, you know, within also possibly the legislature, I've talked about how I'm losing many, many officers. At my last oversight hearing, I talked about the fact that I hired twenty-nine officers but lost forty-four. I'll tell you that that's a challenge in and of itself recruiting for police officers. So I wanted to find out, you know, really what are the true causes for officers? The basic assumption or the popular assumption is that we lose them because of better salaries. And I think Major Manny made a very good presentation on where we're losing these officers to. And on face value, it seems like we're losing officers because of better pay. But, you know, I'd like to find out if there are other factors that may also push that officer to the edge where he says, well, yeah, one is better pay and two, you know, bad management at GPD, bad supervisors, lack of equipment, lack of good working facilities. What are really the root causes that people leave the Guam Police Department? Or Guam Customs and Quarantine or Airport Police? I just had a discussion with Chief JQ Kanata, the executive manager of the airport. We're running short on personnel because of, we have an outbreak of COVID-19 at our quarantine facility. And I said, Chief, I need help. And he goes, you know, Chief Ignacio, I lost eleven people to the Navy Police recently. You know, so we're all losing people to the Navy Police and Customs and Border Protection USA. But are they really leaving for better salaries? Are there other factors that may influence their decision to leave our agencies as well? The next point is that this bill only allows for a hundred eighty days to do this study. Which brings me to my next point as the Post Commission Chair. The Post Commission Chair is not a fully operational commission. It does not function eight to five, Monday to Friday. Excuse me. It has a part-time executive director and one part-time employee who works at the Guam Community College. So we do not have the full staff. Who's going to do this study? Who under the Post Commission is going to be charged for completing this study within a hundred and eighty days? Where's the staffing going to come from? I talked recently, I don't have a personal officer. I am currently trying to recruit a personal officer. I've had a hard time keeping personal officers. In the past year since two thousand nineteen to present, I've had, I've gone to three personal officers. That was a challenge for me as I was talking about my, my random drug testing, which again I brought up during my oversight hearing. I've been trying to do random drug testing. My challenge is trying to keep a personal officer so that we can move this thing along. So who am I going to assign to the Post Commission to do this hundred eighty day study? Which I don't think is sufficient enough time. I think these studies take quite some time to complete. The other thing is that it only affects category one police officers or peace officers. And so, you know, as community leaders, as senators, what effect does that have on your constituents if they fall into other categories? For example, the category two, which is where your firefighters fall under, among others. When we talk about this study, now we have to look at who else wants to jump on the bandwagon. I think this was very apparent back when we did the forty percent. I believe the intention was to provide a leg up for the Guam Police Department based on our knowledge, skills and abilities, but also our responsibilities on the island. And I believe the intention was to provide a forty percent increase in pay for the Guam Police Department. However, because of lobbying by other law enforcement agencies and they all look out, you know, that's their job is to look out for their employees. All other law enforcement officers were added to that. In addition, even those that were, we don't necessarily view as category one peace officers now. They became a part of the category one. Some of them are over like the Department of Reven Tax, the Criminal Investigation Bureau. And it's my understanding that even maybe security guards were trying to jump on this forty percent salary increase. And so, you know, where do we draw the line as to who would be affected by this hundred eighty day study? The next thing is, most of us, if not all of us, are also involved currently in collective bargaining. What effect does the GFC and the collective bargaining unit for the employees that they represent? What effect would that have now or in the future? Once there is a collective bargaining agreement in place? Is this another area again where the collective bargaining units may try to bargain for higher salaries or equal salaries across the board like this bill intends to do? And what effect does that have on current or future leaders of the agencies? As we talk about collective bargaining within the law enforcement agencies? I know I'm currently engaged in collective bargaining. The Fire Department has been engaged. I believe it also extends to the Department of Corrections and also Customs and Quarantine. That's another thing to consider is collective bargaining. The last thing is, when we talk about the Post Commission doing its own study, do we have the expertise? Because there's no mention at all in this bill about what role does the Department of Administration play in this bill? As we all know, the Guam Police Department and Customs and Quarantine and maybe, and most of the other agencies, minus the Airport Police and the Port Police, fall under the pay scale plan, like I said, of the Department of Administration. But they do not play any role that is written here in the current bill in its current form as to what role they play and how they would be folded into this base study plan or pay scale plan that we want to implement. I believe that they have the expertise, but even at that, even with their expertise, they rely on outsourcing these base scale plans and these studies to outside professional firms like the Hay Group. And that's important to know because I remember a time where a police officer three and a sergeant one were slotted into the same pay scale. And it had to be right-sized by the Department of Administration years later after the Hays study. And I remember because I was a police officer three and I was promoted to sergeant one. But when I got promoted, I didn't get a pay increase because I was already slotted based on the Hays study into the sergeant one position. And so that's what I mean about making sure that we have the right expertise and the right personnel and the right group to do this. It has to be a study to implement a pay scale plan. It's not just a matter of saying, hey, I want to be over here at K or I want to be at L or I want to be at O. You know, there's knowledge, skills, abilities. There's a, there's a scoring system that I don't think I know of. I am not familiar with how the scoring system works and what the methodology is. And so those are my concerns, senators, with the current bill and the way it's current form. I think it has very good intentions. But maybe with some tweaking with the language, it may fulfill what it intends to do. And that's my presentation, senators, and I'm open for questions.
Moving forward, we're going to go to Vincent Perez. Vincent, sir, go ahead. Vince? Vincent Perez, you're next. Vince, go ahead, sir. You're next.
Alfredo, sorry about that. Good senators, I apologize. I'm currently on military training. However, I feel that it's important for me to provide some testimony in support of Bill thirty-four dash thirty-six. And maybe I can also provide some insight. I understand like Captain Steve Amogun has some concerns. So pretty much the way that this structure, way the bill is that it creates a force structure and based on your level of responsibility in as a trainee, you build on the foundation that you learn. And as you go along, what happens is that you start to accrue levels of increasing responsibility. And then I'm going to utilize what I know about the military. The Air Force, the Army, the Marines, the Coast Guard, they have an enlisted force structure that is broken down from E-one all the way up to E-nine. From E-one through around E-four, you're learning the ropes and you start to accrue levels of increasing responsibilities. The first-line ship leaders are the E-fives. Those are the starting NCOs. So the NCOs at that level across, it doesn't matter if they're an E-five in the Marines and E-five in the Air Force or an E-five in the Navy or the Army. Your E-five responsibility is pretty much set. But as Steve alluded to, the police department has jurisdiction in certain areas, but so does every other law enforcement entity. So we are both about, you know, they're the first one in and the last one out and we should, you know, there's no comparison. An E-five gets the same E-five pay, E-four all the way across the board. But if you notice, their missions are all different. So, but I digress. So what I'm trying to get at is that the government of Guam is comprised of diverse group of law enforcement and functionally separate and specialized law enforcement officers all across in the government of Guam. However, there's no mechanism that identifies that if you equate to a first-line supervisor like an E-five, for example, and your level of responsibility is similar between Customs and DOC or the Police Department. What your, if you take a look at the pay scales now, the pay scale starting at the trainee level is pretty much flat. They're all the same. But once they graduate, all of a sudden you see a two-step, three-step, one-step. Where is the alignment? Captain Steve Amogun alluded to a study that was done. I was part of that study. And one of the things I noticed was that because they threw a forty percent across the board increase, the recommendations which were made by the Hays study on right sizing and aligning similar levels of responsibility were not incorporated. They pretty much took that out. So when you take a look at Senator Moylan's bill, what it hopes to accomplish is similar to creating a model that is used in the several branches of the military, which is, you know, increasing levels of responsibilities. And by the time you get to the rank of E-nine, you're like at the top level and you are the, you are the top tier of leadership. And then you got the middle level of leadership, which is your E-five, six and seven. So what this hopes to accomplish is really just to right-size levels of responsibility and based on a foundation that is flat. So if you decide that you're going to join, if you leave customs and you go over to the police department, the way that I see it is like in the military, I've seen this happen where guys in the army, they come out, they left like an E-four and they come over to the Air Force and they join it. They don't drop their pay. They don't go, all they're required to do is take their military occupational skill training and they keep their rank. I mean, unless you do something really detrimental to lose it, then pretty much you're just going to move over. So I understand there are inherent differences in the, in the different law enforcement entities, but so is the same for the military. We all have our different missions. We all have our different jurisdictions. But somewhere built into our duties and responsibilities are levels of management, levels of supervision and levels of hands-on learning that can be broken down and identified through this force structure. So I don't want to belabor the point, but I just wanted to say that I am in support and I understand that maybe there may be some issues that may be worked out, but I believe that if you develop it through the rules-making, that we can fix it. So that concludes my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Going forward, I want to call up Mark Torrey. Mark, go ahead, sir. Mark, are you there, sir?
Sir, can you hear me? I'm not sure if I can put myself on video, but I'm not prepared to, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Mark.
Well, Alfredo, sir, I'm not prepared to provide testimony at the moment, but I will provide a written testimony.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I'll give you that, the address after we're complete with the testimonies. Okay, so we're going to go down to the first one before I turn it over to the to Senator Moylan. I want to go to Senator Tonyana. Sir, do you have anything? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I don't have anything. I'm just listening and just trying to decipher the different positions that each agency or representative of testified on the, on the bill. I'm not sure if Mr. Sean Nelson is still online or not. But I just wanted to find out with him if he's representing the department or himself as just a private citizen. So I'm not sure what his position was there, but no, no other questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I think Sean is still online. Sean, go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry. Love that asking. Yes?
Yeah, were you, were you testifying on behalf of the Department of Youth Affairs or?
That is correct. That is correct, sir.
So your testimony is, okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go down the line. Next in line to, we're going to go forward with Senator Kelu Tidaway. Ma'am, go ahead, ma'am.
So just, Mr. Chair, good morning to everyone who's testifying here today. You know, I too can say that I'm in support of any kind of salary increase to help our public safety officers who put themselves and out on the line here for our community. So but it's important to, you know, I appreciate all the testimony this morning. And it's important that any kind of legislation that we put forward from the legislature that it's, you know, it provides all the mechanisms needed to move forward, to make a bill happen. And one of the issues, of course, is it provides all the mechanisms needed to move forward, to make a bill happen. And one of the issues, of course, is funding. The bill doesn't recognize any funding and this makes it very difficult to move forward with it. So I just, you know, I'm glad that Stephen actually too earlier on his testimony basically took a lot of the concerns I had that I've written down. Everything from the Competitive Wage Act of two thousand fourteen, I think Chief Suba, I mean, sorry, Chief Ignatia, Chief but Chief Ignatia brings up the, the whole thirty percent, you know, because if I'm not mistaken, the pay plan in its full implementation in public law twenty-nine dash one oh five, which gave law enforcement and public safety officers thirty percent government wage competitive act of two thousand fourteen and forty percent adjustment. But also in regards to the Competitive Wage Act, I believe that there was something in, in the law that said that DOA will assist the pay plan again in approximately three years, if I'm not mistaken. And I think after every three years, that DOA will, will basically go through this type of assessment. And it's definitely needed through inflation like everything. I concur with Chief Ignatia with your testimony. Testimony brings out a lot of, of concerns and going forward. But the other thing I had was with, with Dr. Fee. Have you had an opportunity before providing your testimony, or maybe I would have hoped that you had a chance to read the fiscal note? The fiscal note that came with the, the bill from BBMR, Dr. Fee, did you have a chance to read that? Oh, you're in mute. Okay.
I haven't, no, I haven't seen that. No.
Okay, that probably explains it because then maybe you would have probably answered some of the questions, particularly in the last paragraph of the fiscal note, and it's very short, Mr. Chair, if I may. The proposed legislation intends to add a new five-one-one-zero-two-point-three-three-zero to chapter fifty-one of Title VII Guam Code annotated. It should be noted there are currently exists a five-one-one-zero-two-thirty amendments of rules and regulations added to public law thirty-five dash seven-nine. This is a technical error on the proposed legislation that will need to be corrected. I believe Chief Ignatia, you, you've touched on this particular scenario right here. And as the chairman of the post, I'm pretty sure you, you, you know your, your stuff when it comes to what happens at the post and what you can and cannot do. And I, you know, I greatly appreciated Chief Suba moving forward with the rules and regulations that you're trying to push through with all that you have and so that these salaries, which are definitely needed on, on an increase, a wage study definitely needs to be done. It hasn't been done in the last three years as what was proposed in the two thousand fourteen Competitive Wage Act for police officer, police, you know, public safety. Those in commission. So I greatly appreciate, appreciate you moving forward with regards to that. And like anything, any legislation, if we put something through, it's important that there's funding behind it, that it's not just a bill, you know, that makes it look good, you know, or gets everybody's hopes up and then there is no money behind it. According to also Dr. Fee, according to the fiscal note, it mentions that the cost could estimate about seventy-five thousand dollars. Also in the fiscal note, so you can find that on the website if you look at it. But I greatly appreciate Dr. Fee, your, I read some of your articles as well in the PDN and, and the post. We can agree to disagree on some of them, but I appreciate you putting your neck out there. And you can find this note in the, on the website. And I appreciate all work to you and to in your presentation and look forward to getting a copy if you can. Dr. Fee, if you can send that to my email address, I appreciate that because it's well worth having that as reference moving forward. Again, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity and look forward to to the, everyone else's questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Calo. And moving forward, the next speaker will be John, Senator John Brown. Senator, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I certainly appreciate the testimony and presentation that was provided this morning with regards to addressing the pay issues with regards to law enforcement. I think probably no here and the legislature will disagree that there's a need to address the pay scale. But certainly what's come up as a result of the testimony this morning is the process on how we go about that. Whether this commission should be empowered to do so and certainly listening to the comments by our Chief of Police Ignatia. That doesn't sound at the moment that the Post Commission is equipped to be able to have the resources to do this type of recommendation with regards to the pay scales. I agree, there definitely is a need to address standardizing that process across the board. And then, of course, as, as certain specialties in law enforcement are pursued with those individuals that have those credentials, perhaps it would be appropriate to look at, at additional compensation for that. But certainly at the most basic level, I think we can agree that the pay scale for law enforcement does need to be addressed specifically with regards to the Guam Police Department. I think if we ask our residents, Mr. Chair, today, right now, what are some of the pressing issues that they are concerned with? I'm sure they're going to look at the issues, obviously, of the economy. But I think it's fairly good, Mr. Chair, that we can get considerable consensus because it's something that we in the community as well, with our families experience. Our people are going to come back and say their safety, their personal sense of safety in this community is a concern. And certainly the, the desire and need to have more police presence in, in our community and in our villages to hopefully serve as a deterrent. And, and also the fact that when our people do need the help and response of the Guam Police Department, that there are officers that are going to be available to do that. I remember many years ago, Mr. Chair, when our home was broken into, you know, it took almost ten hours before a police officer was available to show up to even take a report with regards to that. And that was, gosh, twenty-five years ago. And here we are today, there's so many challenges that many of our people are being affected by in very much the same way. So I don't doubt or dispute the need to address and very much would like to see that the pay scale issue is addressed so that we don't continue to lose our officers to other areas of law enforcement, be it in the local level or at the federal level. But I think we need to examine the process under which that is to happen. As we've done in other agencies, certainly the autonomous agencies, we have hired those that have the expertise in evaluating and recommending, providing recommendations for pay scales to do so. I think in this case, we need to do that. It doesn't sound certainly, as I mentioned, from what the police chief mentioned, that the Post Commission can address that. So that, that's where the dispute is, is how do we go about addressing the means on who gets to determine how these pay scales are determined. And that's the challenge. And I certainly believe as a result of the testimony provided and my own experience in having overseen several departments in the government of Guam, that we should have a standard process to do that, be it the Hays study or reexamining specifically law enforcement, we need to address that. We're also aware, of course, as we, the issues that were raised with the smaller entities of law enforcement in our government, with the conservation officers at Department of Agriculture, as you know, Mr. Chair, and then also just our two, we only have two park rangers. And there's a challenge also. And how do we, how do we make those positions more attractive so that we can get more individuals wanting to work in those areas? Because those are areas also that directly interface with the community. Certainly when I was at the Port Authority of Guam, we addressed the pay scales for all of our employees and that was mandated by law for the entire Port Authority of Guam, also to include the Port Police Officers. When you compare their pay scale, I'm sure to the rest of, of the Guam Police Department, I'm sure you're going to see challenges of inequity there as well with regards to GPD. So I have no issue with regards to addressing it, but I think we need to come back to the table. I don't know if you'd like to have a follow-up roundtable meeting on this particular bill that Senator Moylan has introduced. As I mentioned, I think we all agree with Senator Moylan about the need to address it. Now the challenge is what's the mechanism to do that? And I'd like to have that standardized in government so that we don't have just arbitrary figures being thrown on the table and, and let's see and roll the dice and see whatever looks acceptable. I think we need to look at what's, what's the proper and reasonable pay scale that the taxpayers of Guam can afford? But also what we'll look at our community and our size in comparison. People might be leaving for higher paying jobs in California, but the cost of living and depending on where you are in California is also a factor that's taken into consideration on what, what the pay scale is and also what, what the community and what the state can afford to pay their law enforcement officers. So there's a whole bunch of factors and I certainly appreciate the testimony of Chief Ignatia and bringing that to light and everyone that has testified. But I think we need to come back to the table and the drawing board with regards to the mechanism of how and, and having professionals do the proper pay study so that we can have this comparable within law enforcement here on Guam, so that our people don't get shortchanged. And again, I'm not into rolling the dice with regards to what these compensation amounts should be. So while I've had extensive comments, Mr. Chair, that's my overall review and observation of the testimony that I've, I've heard and that has been provided this morning. So thank you to everyone that's provided input and certainly thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. And moving forward, we're gonna go to Senator Chris Drenius. Chris, go ahead, sir.
So this is mostly Mr. Chairman, and much like my other colleagues, I, I want to thank all the law enforcement entities for being here today. Dr. Fee, I was very interested in your presentation. It seemed as though what I was viewing there was you were really honing in on the entry level and, and, and it really kind of that situation. And what I've been hearing from the other, you know, represent, representatives other than the chiefs and, and the leaders of the entities was, was more about how, where the diversity really breaks down is when you start to, of course, you know, accelerate through the process and, and, and training as, as well as certifications and the like. Now, I'm kind of take you through the process of, of, of attaining those higher rank and, and as well as the additional responsibility. So my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, with my good colleague Senator Moylan, if he would be inclined as well, I think the bill is very well intended and structured to kind of have the Post Commission Police Officer Standard Training kind of leading and working on, on this issue simply because of that describing the qualifications is almost the career ladder throughout the different law enforcement entities. So maybe a working group, you know, over the next several weeks. Doc, like I said, Dr. Fee, you look like you've put a lot of work into this and I think that everybody is really astute. This reminds me of when we went through the, the buildup one, when we had the civilian military task force. I had the pleasure of having the Chair of the Public Safety and having all the high ranking officers in a room formulating a plan for law enforcement going forward. You just really, you get these folks together and, and they work well together and come out with a good product. So that's just my recommendation. I know the chairman, the, the author will, will see fit to however he wants to move the bill forward, but I believe very well intended. But it may, maybe a working group, just to work through some of the details moving forward is, is the way to go. I know my other colleagues, Senator Brown, recommended roundtable as well. I think that's, you know, how we also get work done in a working group, you know, there's not cameras and things like that. We, you know, just get down to the finer points. That's just my thoughts and, and recommendations. If they're off base, they may be, but I think the input today showed that everybody's interested and wants to pull on the same rope to get this done, to make sure that we have excellent public safety for our public and proper compensation for officers. So so this must be Mr. Chairman, just my observations of the public hearing and I wish to work with author and the chairman going forward on this initiative.
Thank you very much, Senator Drenius. Moving forward, we go to Senator Frank Blas Jr. Sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for, to everybody who's provided some testimony. And I truly appreciate the, the input and the insight that was shared by, by, by all of you. I was particularly interested in the testimony that was provided by Major Chong and you know, Steve Amaguen and, and especially Chief Steve Ignatia. Chief, if I can ask, do you have, happen to have a written copy of the testimony that you provided? You provided some very salient points and some points that we really need to consider as we move forward on this bill. So do you have a copy of that?
No, sir. I will put it into written form and submit it to the committee.
What you do is just take the YouTube feed office thing, give it to Susan so she can transcribe what you just said. Okay, because that information was
You read my mind.
Yeah, and you know, thank, thank you, Chief. Mr. Chair, I truly appreciate, again, you know, this opportunity, the testimony, I have to agree to though with, with my, my colleagues that the bill is well intentioned. The bill has some great, you know, great intentions and, and a way to be able to move forward. I think that being able to have a little bit more discussion so that we can address some of the concerns that have been brought up by, you know, the subject matter experts, you know, Mr. Chair, I'm looking at the screen right now and you definitely have subject market, subject matter experts when it comes to law enforcement that, that's on the screen. And we give them an opportunity to be able to provide the further input in this thing. I think it will resolve what is becoming a decades-long issue with regards to parity and, and the disparity that, that exists in, in law enforcement pay. You know, it's kind of, you know, Dr. Fee, I appreciate your, your presentation. Had I known this, you know, decades ago, I probably would not have been a police officer, that the same thing existed. You know, and, and, you know, it was, it was kind of disheartening, but, but it shows the, you know, how, where we've advanced through the ages, you know, I was looking at the, the starting pay, pay scale. You know, police, police officers today is far cry from the three dollars and twenty-five cents I was getting when, when I first started, but you know, that's it. You sure definitely don't want to go back to those days, but we want to move forward. So you know, Mr. Chair, I, I'm looking forward to continued discussions on this, on this bill. I want to thank the author for it. You know, it, it, he put it out there and, you know, and I want to thank the, the law enforcement officers, you know, for, for taking the time to be able to look, hey, this is legislation can be good, we can make it, we can make it a better one. And I'm looking forward to participating in that as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Frank, I just wanna, I just want to say that, you know, all the testimonies that are being provided right now is being recorded. And I'll be happy now to give you a copy of the committee report.
You're a good party. You're a good party. Thank you.
Excellent. Before I call she raising her hand, so go ahead, Sean.
Yes, Senator, I just wanted to clarify that, that I spoke on behalf of myself. I did not speak for my department. I myself support the bill. And I do not speak on behalf of my department. Thank you.
Okay, you got it, sir. You got it, Sean. And next in line, moving forward, I want to call on our, our good senator, Senator Delano Nelson. Ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to get clarification for, I see that Chief Perez came and gave testimony. Is he still here? Okay, he's not here. Okay, I just wanted to clarify if he was authorized on active duty to go ahead and give testimony by his commander for this for this hearing. Secondly, I looked up the Captain Amaguen's, if part of his testimony, he mentions the two thousand fourteen Department of Administration's Competitive Pay Act. Is that correct, Captain Amaguen?
Stephen, are you on? Go ahead, Stephen. I guess, I guess.
In any case, Mr. Chair, the one that I, I viewed only covers the executive pay plan, the education pay, pay plan and the nurse pay plan. They don't have a breakdown of the competitive wage study for our category one officers. And so I just wanted to see what was he making his comparison to? Thirdly, Mr. Chair, Dr. Fee, good, is it good morning? How are you? Thank you very much for your presentation. Can you do us some? Thank you very much for your presentation. Can you do us a favor and go back into your presentation and pull up the differentiation of pay by hour for each agency or at entry level? Okay, and then the next slide after that. Okay, this is a slide. Thank you very much, Dr. Fee. So my question to you was, in, are we accounting for the, all the differential types of pay for our category one officers?
I, what I'm looking at is someone who completes the academy and starts the profession. This is the amount of money that we're paying them, we're, we're using to attract them into the profession. And now some of these areas, and I put it down like with the marshals, they prefer experience, so they're not really taking people's It's the same thing with the Attorney General. They want at least a couple of years. And then if you're going to be a probation officer, great, you're going to get $17, but you need a college degree plus an academy. And so it's not your average officer that's, that we're talking about at those rates. However, if you go to work at the port, we're going to start you at $18.19 an hour. And if you don't want to do that, we'll give you the same job and pay you $14 as a security guard, which is a lot more than the $11.87.
And when was this $18.19 instituted for the Port Authority?
I, I don't know. Of all the agencies, and that's what they told me. I don't know whether it was.
Okay, thank you. And do you have a calculation of the benefits that the, that these category one officers receive on top of their hourly rates?
I'm sure they get the, the normal government Guam health insurance, the other contributions, that, you know, the basic things. I put down hazardous pay on there also percentage if, if
Right.
There to pay them. That's the other issue about hazardous pay.
And then the issue on the differential pay? Different types of pay, like night differential, and do you
I didn't put that in here, no.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Fee. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I just want to say one thing. Oh, I do have a question for Chief Ignacio. See. Can we get the gallery view? See here?
Go ahead, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Chief. You, you stated earlier, and you are the post chair as well, right? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
You stated earlier that, that the Post Commission already has the authority to conduct this type of study. Is that correct?
No, what I said is that because we have the authority to adopt our own rules. So I mean, if you look at this bill passing into law, then we technically just go ahead and adopt whatever salary than we want to because we're allowed to under the current post law. Just like we're allowed to adopt our own rules for the PFQT as an example. And so that's what I was alluding to.
Okay, so if this bill was to pass, would you just throw any number out there or will you actually move to conduct a study?
And that's my concern is it doesn't really spell out whether we just go out and pick a number and say, this is where I want to be. I want to be at L, I want to be at O, I want to be at K, or we're going to do a study. You know, look at some methodology as to how we're going to come to a conclusion as to what our pay would be. But my concern with doing the study, like I said, is if you look at the Post Commission now, and I think Dr. Fee spelled this out very well. We are not even a full-time commission. We are very part-time commission. We're borrowing an administrative staff from the Guam Community College. Our executive director is very part-time because he's full-time at the Department of Corrections. And so really, if you take out all those pieces, who's left to do the study? And then that's one of my big concerns is that, you know, it's not a matter of doing the study, it's who's going to do the study? And are we the subject matter experts? We're the subject matter experts in law enforcement. Don't get me wrong. We know how to do our job. But are we the subject matter experts when it comes to determining pay?
What if there was amendment on this bill that gave you a funding source to hire someone to conduct the study properly?
And that's what I was talking about is, you know, making sure that we have the right people who have that background and expertise to help us make that determination as the Post Commission, where we should be slotted, you know, what pay scale should we be at? How much should we earn, you know?
Okay.
What benefit we be entitled to, right?
All right. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, it seems that if we include an amendment that authorizes funding for the Post Commission to conduct the study, to hire an entity to conduct the study for our category one officers, it seems that it would be feasible for the Post Commission to implement a well-thorough scientific study on the pay. I wouldn't say pay increase because it's not a pay increase. They're long deserving of this money. So maybe a more equitable pay for our category one officers. And so, Mr. Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank the sponsor for writing this bill, and I look forward to him amending it so that we find the funding source and that we are given the Post Commission the authority to hire someone to conduct this pay study for the category one officers who have been long deserving and have been waiting many years for this type of equity in pay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Nelson. Now, I want to go back to the author of the bill, Jim Smolin, sir, for his closing remarks or what additional things that he, he would like to pursue in as far as the testimony that was given here this morning. Senator Moylan, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure, did Dr. Fee, were you trying to raise your hand there? I'm sorry.
Was. Can you hear me now? Good. I really want to, and it sounds very strange. I'm really in support of this bill. It has to be done. I, I understand exactly what Chief Ignacio is talking about. We've talked about it a lot. One of my responsibilities was not just, this is not, this is one of the areas that I've been looking at. We've been looking at the whole structure of Post, how to make it more efficient. As I've said, we've, we, we had a very big meeting last week, presentation with the governor and the cabinet. And she's very supportive of getting a full-time director, getting more support staff. And, and we all realize this has to be done. It hasn't been done in the past, but we're going to get it done. And Chief Ignacio was a, is a main supporter of this. And so I feel, I feel the Post can accomplish this task. When I put it as the outside person, all the same thing. This, the Post can sit back and look at it objectively. Yes, it, it means hiring somebody to do it. It's not going to be done with, with current staff, certainly. But it can be done, and I, and I feel confident the Post can, can do it. But it's a fairness issue. We have to help all the agencies out there. Okay, that's all I had to say. Go ahead, Jim, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the presentations and questions. Very helpful in moving the bill forward. We obviously see from Dr. Fee's presentation that it's just not about one agency. It's about peace officers, over 1,200 of them to be addressed. The bill does not identify any funding because it was directed toward the Post Commission to handle. I think we're at today's situation because we funded some studies that got us into this mess. When you can have a security guard at the Port Authority earning $14.15 based on, I don't know who's study, but when you got a Guam Police Department officer laying his light down with a gun and getting all these qualifications, only getting paid $11.87, that's why there was no funding put forward as the, as a fiscal note stated, the fiscal note gives $75,000 for a study. Study to do what again? I think the study should rely first based on the primary objective of the Post. These are the professionals that seen all the inequities of these prior studies that they have never, never taken care of the issues. And that's why we are at where we are today. Maybe from there, then when we pay these companies to come in, they'll listen to the Post and they'll take the direction from the Post, where there'd be the two things that the bill does is introduce the tier level and then the pay scale level, two, two things. Dr. Richard Fee alluded to the presentation he made to Adaloo in support for the Post Commission to provide them additional full-time, full-time staff and possibly a directorship position there, but to help the role of the Post Commission to make it independent like the nursing board, like the education board and so forth. We, we've waited way too long and it's no fault of anybody here right now, but it's just come to this point where we just, why? So this is what we need to do, and I agree with Dr. Fee and I agree with my colleagues. We can make some amendments to this, but please, we definitely need to move forward now more than ever with the crisis we have with these pandemics and other situations where our peace officers are definitely needed. We can't keep on training them at, I think, close to $20,000 a person, only for them to be leaving us for greener pastures when we have the skills and the expertise through our Post Department to make it happen and do the right thing for Guam. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for my colleagues for the good discussion on this. I'm looking forward to having this bill move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, sir.
I would like to thank all of you for your, your participation in today's virtual public hearing on Bill Number 34-36 OR. And if you have any written testimony, you can email it to Senator Pito at Senator JP to lie dot com or hand it over to my office at M V P Unit 1277, Route 4, Sinahana, Guam. I want to thank you all for your participation and may God bless. The time now is the Comedian Public Safety Emergency Response Military Veterans Affairs, Mayor's Council of Guam and Public Transit is now adjourned, and right now is 12:12 P M. Thank you very much.